Review and approve or accept the asset management plans for both water, or I'm sorry, wastewater and storm water so that we can include that to the final package. And then, once everything is finally approved, it ends up being, the documents end up being put out for public access, basically through our city website. So, starting with the wastewater asset management plan, basically, this plan just goes through and talks about our system and what we have and what we're going to do to take care of it. It starts out with our goals, what our desired levels of service are, basically to meet regulatory requirements, minimize our service interruptions, and then minimize public hazards, manage our stormwater into our system, and then provide some capacity for community growth, and look at our life cycles and partner communities. Something to keep in mind as we put these plans together, these are the City of Lowell's plans. Now, our sewer treatment facility, we're partnered with Lowell Township. We don't take care of anything outside of the city. So, this plan, our program for the City of Lowell, covers our collection system and the treatment facility. Anything outside of that, and the treatment facility for our needs and our 18% that we have available for our neighbor. So, we think that those ideas of the goals, what we want to accomplish, and we take and break it down to the inventory, what we own. The system's been looked at, it's been mapped out, our sanitary system and our storm system as well. And we have it on our GIS system so that it can be documented and reviewed, and we can see what we have, and others can see what we have as well. So, we take that, and we keep that up to date. That's part of our plan, is we commit to keeping that up to date. And then, we move forward as our worst of failure. If something was to fail, what's the chance of that happening? So, they went through and they scored that, and then have that put together along with what happens if there's a failure, what's the critical issues there. They take those two, and then they figure out from there. And basically, this information's taken, and that's what's helped to make this asset management plan, to come up with a program for maintaining what we have and looking into the future. Once we get those, then we have to look at our capacity, and we're going to talk a little bit later tonight about a way to help with our capacity. Our plan's the size that it is. What we can do is try to get some of the groundwater out of the system, and that will increase our capacity of the plan as a whole, but will create room in there for future flows into the system. Again, we talked Foreman Street, you'll understand how that works a little better. So, we have those issues with the capacity, making sure we have enough for our community and that what we share with our neighbors currently, and make sure that keeps going as well. So, this program for wastewater looks at both our system and our treatment facility. And when we get into the program, I'd like to talk a little bit more to that, too. So, then, we take all that, and we make sure we have our routine maintenance covered, our plan layers to keep things staffed, our people staffed, our equipment levels up, so we can get out and take care of any situations that come up. And then, if we need to go out and hire outside contractors, now, we have sewer backup, we don't have sewer truck to go jet a line, so we do rely on outside contractors and things like that. Wastewater plant, big crew that works there does the best they can, but there are times when things are just a lot greater than what we can do ourselves, and we hire that out, too. And then, as we move along, now, we have our capital improvement program. You keep the system up, the maintenance of it up, so it can expand that, how long it's going to last. It's kind of like, remember with the streets, we do little maintenance items to help extend the longevity of the road. Asset management plans, that's what it's all about, and there's ways to do that with wastewater, making sure our system is monitored, make sure we take care of little problems in it, maintain things as we go along instead of sitting back waiting for the huge failure and then have to put out the big bucks to try to fix that. But, there's also the capital improvements, so those areas that we do know need to be fixed, large items, we have a plan put together for that, that we review yearly and make sure that we're working to accomplish those goals on there. With all those goals accomplishing them, the biggest part of that is then we have to have a financial strategy that says how we're going to come up with some funding for that. Again, our plan is we look at our rates, we look at our cash balances, we look at what monies might be out there in other areas to help with our programs, bring them all together, and maintain our system to the best of our ability to extend longevity as much as we can. So, again, the asset management program takes that plan and expands on those ideas. And just to give a couple of ideas with that, as I said, the inventory of what we own, the program is to keep up on that. Anytime we do an improvement, we take those information that we get on the new plans, make sure that gets into our GIS system. We keep track of our equipment, our materials and everything, and again, we keep track of that at the public works in our systems down there. The wastewater plant has a computerized maintenance and management system. They track all the work they do over there with the treatment facility and lift stations, and again, have that information available to us for making our decisions as we move down the road with our programs. We look at our assessment, we'll get out, with the solid grant monies, we were able to clean and monitor, take videos of our, sort of all of our system, so we have an understanding of what we have out there. That's something that, over time, we'd have to repeat again as we move on. And if we can schedule it with the routine maintenance, it's something we can do a little bit every year to keep up on it, and just keep it revolving. Again, when we know we've got some areas of concern, we get those fixed, those areas go to the lower end of the needs scale, and the areas that we have concerns with can move up on that plan as well. Again, we take all that information and we work on what's important in there, what we have to take care of first and foremost, and have a plan put together instead of just waiting for something to fall apart. One of the other things, though, with the capacity end of it, looking for ways to improve our plant and our system itself, now, with the city the size that we are, our boundaries already set, there are a few areas we can extend sewer within the city. But, for the most part, we're pretty well built out for that end of it, but we still have that to think about as we look at our facility, our treatment facility itself, and making sure we meet our needs today and into the future. One of the capital improvement, again, our plan on that is to look at every year, do that review, and we do a CIP for our budgeting and have that discussion, and keep things moving forward, and keep things current so that we stay up on our system. Again, same as what we would be doing with our street system, our water system, this is our sanitary system and our storm system. All these things get brought together, as we talked in our, when we talked in streets, take all this information, bring it together into a program, an actual project, like we're talking out here with Monroe Street, is something that's going to be huge and take care of all of our infrastructure. And then, these plans will help us work these together and come up with knowing what we need to do, going into it, instead of digging up something and say, oh, wait, look at this, it's already fallen apart, we don't know what we have there. And then, at the end, one of the big things is the, again, the financial strategy and trying to keep up on all our expected costs and incomes, cash balances. And a part of this program, I'm just finalizing right now, is basically a rate study to look at where we're at with our funds and where we're going to go, and you'll hear about that at the next meeting. But, some of the things we have to keep in mind is keeping our program working along so that we set our structures to maintain minimum cash balances as set by the city policies, and so that we have the dollars to keep moving forward. I mean, that's a hard hurdle to get over, but it's something that we have to keep in mind as we're moving forward with this. And our stormwater asset management program is pretty much the same. The biggest difference here is we don't have a huge funding source, we don't have utility, we don't have utility rates for storm stores, so that's been coming out of our general fund budget. But, those are all areas we have to keep in mind as we're working on projects, looking at the future, looking at issues that are going around in our system. So, that's what we have with our programs. And again, as we've been working along, this is my working sheet right now for wastewater capital projects. This is one of our, these are my two sheets I've been working with, with our engineers provided on our capital projects for our stormwater collection and our wastewater collection systems, and how we're going to try to balance these out over the years. So, these are all things that have been worked on. Once they're done, doesn't mean we take and put them on the shelf and not look at them again. This is something that we, as internally committee, needs to, internally with administrations, need to keep looking at these things, so every year, we can make sure we're moving in a good direction, the best that we can, which hopefully have to work with, so that, again, we don't fall way behind the eight ball and end up with a whole lot of things that still need to be done. I mean, we can see our streets and see what needs to be done with those. All these items are mostly underground, and they're hard to see, so we want to make sure that we have all this information, and we're still looking at this and making sure we're doing our best to keep up on it. So, again, with today, what they need to do is if they have any questions, answer those with our stormwater asset management plan and our wastewater asset management plan. And if council so chooses, and they see any changes, maybe we can get that approved and move that forward to our engineers so that they can put it into the packet, that needs to be submitted to the state.
Any questions for Dan? No? All right. Motion to then approve the wastewater asset management plan and the stormwater asset management plan.
So, move?
I'll support.
Anything else for Dan or Mike? Sue?
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that, Dan. Oh, new business item A, City of Lowell financial statements, Michael.
Yes, Peter Gaitner's here tonight to go over the audit that was just completed. The audit should be in your shared file.
One of the separate ones.
Yes, a separate one.
Well, I'm pretty good news. My name's Peter Gaitner, I'm here to answer any questions regarding the financial statements, the financial statement audit process, as well as just to share a brief narrative of what's included within those financial statements. Beginning on page one of the financial statements is our opinion, and I always like to point out that the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and it's our responsibility to express an opinion on those financial statements based on our audit. Your audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and the last paragraph on page one provides a nice summary. I'm going to summarize the two-page opinion based on that last paragraph. It's our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position, results of operations, cash flows where applicable of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, the aggregate component units, as well as the aggregate remaining funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's what I would refer to as a clean opinion, and that's the highest opinion you can receive, so that's great. Following the opinion is the management's discussion and analysis. That provides a nice place for the interested public media to take a look at, how did we end this year compared to last year? What were the activities of this year compared to last year? What was considered in our budgeting process? What were the significant capital assets purchased? What occurred with our debt? So, all those things are summarized in about five pages. With that being said, the slides that I have try to summarize the financial statements that come after that management's discussion and analysis. I did want to point out, as I don't have a slide on it, that your general fund budget on page 55 shows your revenues were within 1% of your budget and your expenditures were within 3% of your budget, which is very tight, right on where you planned to be. Now, the next, the first picture we're going to take a look here is, this is a picture of all of your governmental funds, as well as all of your fixed assets of those governmental funds, meaning the general fund, major streets, local streets, not your water, sewer, electric, utilities, which are your business-type activities. But, this is just a big-picture look at the bottom line of those governmental activities from a business perspective. You're going to see a large fluctuation in that blue. That's the result of dollars being, that were, with the community foundation being pulled off your books, and you see how it spikes back up, that's that state grant coming in. So, restricted dollars primarily within that balance are major streets, local streets, and you have a number of endowments or various balances. That spike is dollars going to the community foundation, preemptive investment to return to you in the future, and the spike up is the state's component. That bottom line creeped down again this year, that's the unrestricted deficit, and this year, that was a particularly bad year for your pension plan. The investment rate of return was expected to be 7.75%, and it was negative. And in the coming year, you might see a spike back up. This is looking like a better year than last year's investment performance. But, a big-picture perspective of those governmental activities. Now, the next slide that we have here is a look at your business-type activities. Very limited balance of restricted dollars, those relate to bond covenants, but you can see your unrestricted balance is stable, and you continue to invest in capital, net of the depreciation on that capital, which is infrastructure, pipes in the ground, and it's net of the debt as well. So, you've been able to pay down debt, and yet, still invest in capital, infrastructure within your community, water, sewer, electric. The next slide that we have is looking at those governmental activities, full accrual perspective, including depreciation, and the largest expenses are in blue, and you'll see it's public safety, general government, and you see that spike in purple, that's really the, that's the state grant coming in that supports culture and recreation. But, this is a very typical picture of cities. Typically, this is showing to what extent are these operations self-supporting, but public safety is not, general government is not, public works does receive some dollars, and then, when you take a look at your streets, you can see that they're highly supported by the PAC 51 funding. But, very typical picture with the exception of that culture and recreation component. Next slide that we have here shows select funds. This is looking at the funds at a modified accrual basis of accounting perspective. This is the perspective that you budget on, and you see throughout the year when you see financial reports for your general fund, the major streets, local streets. This just shows what has happened to that bottom line over time. So, you've been able to put some dollars away to help support cash flow and to do projects going forward, the strongest financial position you've done in over that nine-year period. Does that make sense? But, that's fund balance, that's the difference between your assets and liabilities in each of those funds, so that's great. The next slide that we have just shows your expenditures and what has happened over time. Now, these expenditures include capital purchases. They're not looking at things from the business perspective, but more of a cash in and a cash out, so you'll see spikes here and there when you go out and buy a piece of equipment, or you put in a seawall, or you do whatever you do on a capital perspective. That constant pressure of inflation is what's being displayed. And the next slide that I have is a look at each one of your business-type activities. So, here's your sewer fund, and for 19, you can see your change in the bottom line was positive prior two years, a slight loss. Generally, these are break even, but you like to see constantly putting dollars aside so you can invest in infrastructure and cover the cost of that inflation. When you put in the pipe, it cost you, 30 years ago, it cost you X per foot, now it's X times three per foot. So, you need to have those dollars unless you want to go to the bond market to support your operations. Next picture we have, water funding consistently, slight increase in the bottom line. And keep in mind here, or consider here, you've got a million-dollar operation, and you haven't had income on, let's say, it's $50,000. You can't do a lot with $50,000. When you rebuild a whole street, your water component of that street might be, you know, $350,000. But, if you consistently are able to put some dollars aside here, so have some dollars available when you have to replace them in the disney structure, so that's positive. And then, the next picture that we have here is a little light and power. You can see also consistently putting some dollars to the bottom line. We do conduct audit of light and power separately. We presented that report to the Board of Light and Power several months ago, so it's just included in the audit process as a fund that you see. But, most of the information we present for light and power, we just give to that board from the perspective of where's the power coming from, where's it going to, et cetera, et cetera. And that is a pictorial presentation of your audit. Now, following the financial statements, which those pictures present are notes to the financial statements that provide a lot of detail on your pension plans, your OED plans, contingencies, investments, a vast amount of information in the notes. And following the notes are detailed schedules for each of your funds. So, for instance, if you want to see how did the general fund do, you take a look at page 57 for expenses, 55 for revenues, following that, you'll see each of your non-major funds, so the major street, local street, about 10 different funds there, and an income statement for each of those following that presentation. So, a lot of detailed information. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have. In addition to the audit, we also provide some communications to the board that are required under generally accepted auditing standards, talking about our responsibilities, management's responsibilities, any issues that were identified during the audit process. Can I answer any questions for you, or go into any more detail, or more detail on any of the financial aspects of the audit or the audit process? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate the time. All right. Item B, ordinance 19-9, Consumers Energy franchise agreement, Michael.
Yes. Our agreement with Consumers Energy to rely natural gas for our community is about to expire, needs to be renewed. Attached is a copy of the proposed Consumers Energy gas franchise ordinance. The agreement with the city is a 30-year agreement for consumers to lay, maintain, and commercially operate gas lines and facilities across public places within the City of Lowell. I had the city attorney review the agreement, and the only concern was the last sentence in section two pertaining to consumers' right to trim and remove trees if necessary. During our review, the city requested to have a minimum of a 2-inch caliper tree replacing whatever might be removed if this occurred. During my discussion with Consumers, they informed us that tree removal is accounted for in the rates assessed to customers, but not tree replacement. Our government representative from Consumers, Karen McCarthy, who's here tonight, informed us that if this did happen, and we discussed it with them, most likely, they would replace the tree, but couldn't put language in their agreements with municipalities. The issue occurred last year in the gas project they worked with Lowell Light Power, and in that instance, they replaced the tree where needed. Karen is here tonight to answer any questions that you have, but I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve ordinance 19-9 as presented.
Any questions? We got to have guests, I guess. I'll look for that motion then for ordinance 19-9.
So, move?
Support.
Any other discussion on it? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeVore?
Yes. Item C, 36-19, poverty exemption guidelines.
In the 2019 assessment year, the Michigan Tax Commission requires local governing bodies to adopt guidelines that set poverty exemption guidelines to have an effect when these requests are due by property owners. Attached is a resolution and a proposed copy of the guidelines. We are utilizing the interim levels set by the United States Department of Health and Human Services. Our guidelines and procedures for applicants to follow are established. Our guidelines also set the procedure for an appearance with the Board of Review and how the Board is to evaluate the applicant if this occurs. Going forward, these guidelines must be set annually and approved by the local governing body. I recommend that Lowell, the Lowell City Council approve resolution 36-19, setting the City of Lowell poverty exemption guidelines.
Any questions for Mike on that?
Mayor, I just have one issue of clarification. The way the guidelines are written, every year, when the federal government sets the new amount, you automatically adopt whatever the federal government does, so it won't be necessary to do it annually.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns or comments? Motion then for resolution 36-19?
I'll make that motion for approval in resolution 36-19.
For discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
All right, Little League agreement renewal.
The city is in agreement with Lowell Little League to use street side and recreation parks to review the baseball game. The agreement is set to expire on May 30th, 2020. Lowell Little League would like to begin registered registration at the beginning of the new year and was hoping to renew the contract. After discussing the current agreement, Lowell Little League and I had no issue with extending the current agreement for the next year. The requirements regarding user fee and participation fees will remain the same, and the city will continue to maintain the facilities in the same manner we do now. I recommend the Lowell City Council extend our current agreement with Lowell Little League beginning on July 1st, 2020 until June 30th, 2021. Actually, correction, that should be June 1st, 2020 to May 30th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
I did have a question, though. I noticed the last contract was for three years. Is there any reason why we won't do another three-year contract with them?
We can.
I mean, bringing the light again? I saw that in the, I saw that.
It has been.
So. And really, what you could really do is every year, just, I mean, have an agreement every year.
Perry Beecham, chairman of the Parks Commission. They were on the board, the commission hasn't had the opportunity, time to look at the
whole thing, and they're talking with Mike and with the Little League. They want to move forward so that they can get those prices out to their kids and the families and everything, so what they can do. And so, that's kind of why we've just sent one year as compared to negotiating a three-year contract with them.
Just wants to move forward, and then we can buy some time.
We can.
For the Parks Board to take care of it. All right, there is a motion we need to settle.
Support.
Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
All right. Dan is up again, number 55 mower replacement.
To the current fiscal budget, we have a mower, number 55, needs to be replaced. It's a 2,072-inch commercial mower, it's got quite a few hours on it, and it's in need of replacement. Earlier this summer, we have staff demoed a few different types of mowers, and one they liked the best was this rear discharge 60-inch, side discharge blowing it out the side, just, you know, because you do regular mowing, leaves kind of a mess there. They found with the true discharge, it doesn't leave that, does a really nice job. So, that's what they were looking at wanting to purchase. It comes from our MyDeals State of Michigan program for $9,190. We budget $9,600 for this replacement, and if we wait until January, the same unit will go up about $2,000 on state purchasing, so that's why we want to get this resolved down. It's in this year's budget, and budget more than what this is coming in at.
All right. Any questions for Dan?
So, we used all of our duct tape and bale kind to hold it together as long as possible, so it, 19 years, that's the thing.
Since you're going down shortage on your mower, how much more time you going to spend mowing your day?
Well, think about it.
Twelve inches.
So, which one more pass on going across the 75-tex area?
I think we should have a study into 60-foot, 72-inch width mower. Is there an engineer here that could give us a bid?
All right.
Hey, I moved it. We buy this mower now before the price goes up.
I'll support.
Blowers in the winter, snow blowers in the summer. Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, no going anywhere, Dan. Foreman Street Sanitary Center.
Foreman Street, as we just mentioned in that, the sourbrat process, one of the things you want to look at is our capacity at our plant, and one of the things you want to look at is water that's in our system that doesn't need to be there. Through the process of reviewing our system, the engineers determined that there's an area on Foreman Street that is letting quite a bit of water into our system. They estimate about 288,000 gallons a day of water coming into the system. That's clean water, going through the system, probably flushed along, but then, it's in the plant, and those folks there have to clean it up to the standards. Right now, treatment facility's about 1.4 million gallons a day. We treat about 500,000, 800,000 gallons of water a day, so that difference between the 800 and the 1.4 million is coming from somewhere, more than likely, IONI. Again, through the process, they found two areas of high IONI, this one here on Foreman and one over on Monroe. We're looking at tackling the Monroe issue, we're doing Monroe Street a couple of years, but the thought was this year, let's get on this Foreman Street, it's two blocks from Beach to Hudson, and get that fixed. Of course, we've got a couple of hurdles to get over when we do this. If we're going to do it this year, we've got basically the months of June, July, and half of August while school's out to get this done. Typically, something like this, we want to get moving sooner than we have, but this just came up within the last month or so, and we decided we need to move forward with it. So, I contacted both of our engineers, we got the little proposal back from Brian Newhoff for the design of $9,050, and they also had a quote, the construction... And I also had a quote, the construction and engineering services at the same time for when the board takes place. Typically, that would be two stages, one to get the engineering work done and then one to get that part done. But I brought it in together so we can get it done and move forward. And that would be another $11,800 for a total amount of $20,850 to design it and then oversee the construction on that.
Is that water coming in, whether it's raining or not?
Yes, the groundwater. My understanding of the groundwater cable in that area is very high. And this pipe sits in there. Part of the construction is going to be dewatering to get that down so they can take it up and do their thing and then put it back in there. And from what my understanding is, is there's a lot of cracks and then all the joints are leaking. It's just, it's just a lot of water coming in there all the time. Where that water is going to go once we fix the sewer pipe, I don't know. But it's not going to go in there soon. And that's what we need to start with. Yeah, we get almost 30,000 gallons out of our treatment system. That's halfway of our overage that we're seeing just in the raw numbers. This situation came up a few months ago and I made a comment that we have multiple bids, but all we're seeing is the low bid. We really need to see all of the bids. That was a complaint I made a few months ago. If we get multiple bids, the council should see those. Just to see that we're comparing apples to apples.
I did look at the overall bid too. And I do have a little concern as far as the management and I hope they do a better job managing than they did on the last project they did. I don't know, we got the best management out of Prine at Newhoff. We've had a lot of issues after the fact. So just want to make sure that they meet the criteria of what they're telling us they're going.
Turn to noted and be out there. Who was the other bid? Oh, Williams. Okay, what was that number? $45,000 plus.
Any other questions for Dan? Now, a motion to approve the front new office proposal cost not to exceed $20,800.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion on that? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
No.
All right, Board and Commission reports, Greg, pick us up.
Nothing to report. All right. Planning Commission, Brad approaches us about putting 12 condos in above the furniture site. We went over it, we agreed, so he can get the grant. He's on his way to doing that. And Light and Power was a typical shipment an hour meeting. And it was just going over a lot of good stuff, but it, nothing of very importance as a bid list. Cliff?
Here's a picture of this proposed Superior Labs. The historical district emptied its checkbook and, because he's getting some DEC?
Yeah, DEC money, yep.
I also just wrote a grant request asking the community fund for $100,000 this year because he wants to do some, obviously, big project across the street. Spring Grove wants to redo the front. And the new owners of the Beer Star would like to restore their building to historical specs.
Jim?
The LCTV Board met a couple of weeks ago and we have approximately a little over $109,000 to grant out this year. The cutoff date on that is February 7 at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. So for those who want to put in for it, that's the date.
It is?
Oh, and by the way, Mark Muntz will stay on that board.
Oh, fantastic.
Yep.
All right, require authority was canceled again. Cliff covered historic, so I don't have anything else. Mike, sitting in, is there a report?
Couple of items. First, I was informed this week, or this early last week, about, from MDOT, the Small Urban Program, that there were still funds available for the 2020 year. Being that Monroe was approved for year 2022, I didn't bundle that up because we still have a lot of work that has to be done on that. That being said, the project we just discussed, Riverside, I'm sorry, Foreman, I'm sorry, on Foreman. Foreman is a federally eligible road. And as a result, we could apply to have the road costs for, once we do, once we do the project on Foreman to replace the sewer, we can get the road costs funded through the Small Urban Program. So, and they can, they'll fund, they fund up to 80% of the improvement cost. So myself and DPDW Director, we did submit a grant, we did submit a request to MDOT for that funding. We have to go through the Grand Valley Metro Council to get approved for that. So we will be probably doing that in January. We received our first application today for adult-use marijuana facility. It is the former family video site. They have submitted their application. They have submitted their site plan, or the special land use application. So we will begin reviewing that. It is our intent to have it for the January Planning Commission meeting for them to review. So we are working on that. Lou Bender will be here on Tuesday, January 23 from 5:30 to 9:00. And also wanted to let you know that the DDA did meet about a week and a half ago on Thursday, Thursday the 6th. And they, we have an opportunity to apply for a Community Development Block grant for Amity Street. Amity Street is in the low-income census tract for the city. And infrastructure improvements are eligible projects under CDVG. The DDA did agree to commit, if this project moves forward, $142,000 towards the total cost of the project. If you recall, we had estimated last year that the cost for Amity was $500,000. The first two blocks of Amity from Main Street to Elm are in the Downtown Development Authority. So if you take the project divided by seven blocks, it's about, it's $142,000. So the DDA is willing to put that part up as a match for the grant. And so we will be working, administratively working on submitting that grant here very soon. That's all I have. I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, that's. Appointments, we took care of Mark Muntz. The only one, the only other one that's still past due is that Construction Ward of Appeals. How many times do they meet, Sue? They don't, rarely meet.
They, that's about.
They think it's one meeting every eight years or something. I, if nobody has any objections, I'll sit on that. Just till that one's off the appointments list. I think one meeting every eight years, I can fit it in my schedule. Or you can just sit in for me?
I would sit in.
Okay, they're, they're very linked meetings. Oh, even better. What about cater? Are they catered?
No.
I'll still do it if nobody has any objections. Then we only have the 2020 appointments still to take care of. Mark will continue and I'll take Dan's spot. And no new applications?
No.
Perfect. Council comments, Cliff?
I have nothing.
Jim?
I'm good, thank you.
Right.
Nothing. Marty, I forgot. At Light and Power meeting, Steve presented us with a thing called the ICE calculator. And it's fascinating. Steve hadn't gotten into it all that much, but what it did was, it shows a comparison of what it costs the Light and Power people when power's out versus what the cost is of Consumers Energy. And it's huge. Consumers over, it was small, but it was like $1,004,000 and we were like $185,000. So it's a huge difference. Once he gets good at, and has read all of it.
I know.
While we seem to get kryptonite.
Yeah, Jim got it. Pretty good.
It'd be kind of fun to do a, have him come to council the whole and do an explanation and show that slide and all that like we did. Because that was, that was quite important.
Do you care if I expand on that a little bit? So there's this calculator, like Marty said, and actually, instead of looking at it from the utility perspective, they look at the negative economic impact that the ratepayers face, you know, when there's outages that take place. So we took our metrics for 2018 and compared them just to other utilities. And it really puts a value from a customer perspective on having high reliability and also a cost justification to go forward with certain projects. And it's been a lot more money for, you know, industrial and commercial customers than one might think. I know Light and Power is not being considered to be sold, but, you know, throughout America, there are public power utilities where councils or boards are, you know, point around the fact, should we sell the utility? But this is a good lens to look at what's the negative impact economically to the rate base from an, you know, from a loss in production or food or wage perspective. So be happy to present the ICE calculator as I read through it more at an open committee in the whole or whenever Mike would have time on an agenda, so.
Thanks, Steve.
It's going to be good.
You did really good on that one. Except the part where you forgot the first time.
Well, I had to bring it up. I remember what I was calling.
I, you know, and I do have some stuff. Liz in the chamber, they've been going 650 miles an hour for the last few months. And every single one of those events that they've tried to pack into this timeframe,